I don't see. I got ten minutes to spare and I don't see Vicki yet. I'm just in tune with you, right? Just in tune? Yeah. Early or whatever you want to call it. Early. Well, I paid me for this one. Everybody wants. Hey, Carrie.
It's three.
The chair's up here.
Ever you still want to sit?
Come on.
Harry, no, you're Baptist, you can come in the front row.
Oh.
Me, Baptist, come in the front row. Could be a back row.
Oh, yeah, great.
The representative, it's your problem. Does this one come with a paycheck?
I don't know.
Always the debt.
Yeah. Six bucks.
Carrie, I just stopped. No, I swear.
He's on his way. I don't know. Come into council, he goes, yes.
I have no idea why I got this.
Everybody wins yours.
Five point nine.
She said in front of you and I didn't say it by her. No, she didn't.
They're sharing.
Even if I'm not telling you to shout.
Dedicated assets.
That is so recent.
Jean? Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. I'll be moving when the door is open. And opening sign. They tried to get us to sign off on Black Hawk speed. A part mutually agree.
Not for eleven AM, pick a wall.
I kind of his mouth.
Really tell him.
Shack somewhere and we will say at six thirty.
Want AI to speak for you?
Would you?
Would you? Is he here?
Who, Willie?
We don't know. Oh, yeah, those work. Okay.
She's got the mouse.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, this is what we can and everything else. Well, you gotta. You're back flush. Build it yet?
I mean, they did. Pressure test.
We just still that coming back.
It's getting closer, though.
You know the lines late last time and they all leave. All the connections, they didn't tighten.
On all the flanges?
Really?
Yep. They dummy'd together and then just never went back and.
He's running that, though.
I don't know, I walked up there and I looked in the hole and I was like, ooh, that's not good. I know we never tighten, I said, okay. Get all that fixed on the.
Go on the, on the. On Willie clock? Yeah. On Willie clock? Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please take a roll?
Elsma Havens?
Here.
Elsma Mixon?
Here.
Elsma Kaufman?
Yeah.
Ellison?
Present.
And Mayor Graves?
Here. Um, you have before you an agenda that I do not believe has any changes to it. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Next item is appointments, um, the first appointment is a municipal judge, hooray, we finally have a municipal judge. So, uh, Mr. Hester, Frank, whatever you'd like to be called, your honor. Your honor. Are you gonna give him the oath, Doug, or you want me to, or?
Oh, do we have an oath?
You do, but you need to make appointment and they have to approve it.
All right. Well, I would, uh, ask for council confirmation to appoint our municipal judge as Mr. Frank Hester. So moved. And second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, oppose, same sign. You're, you're now in some sort of an official capacity, getting ready to come on up and, and take the official capacity. Get swore out. And thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Hester, would you raise your right hand? I, Frank Hester.
I, Frank Hester.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear over.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you, Frank. Just here, I come. And then next, we have an officer, Brad.
Pledge to my officer's appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my officer's appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge duties of my.
Willie stood all the way up.
And that's a lot. Are you sure?
So much for your first pay raise.
It took them three minutes to get up. After the meeting. No, no, no. Willie don't get up twice. What's up, guys? Welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, you have in front of you the consent agenda, for the purpose of discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve and place to record the items in the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? I think I know. All right, if everybody's got nothing, we'll, um, go ahead and call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion will carry. Moving on to petitions, memorials, proclamations, and public comment, uh, first item up is Rick Keck. Rick, I'd like to come over here and shake your hand.
Um, this last week or ten days, we've had lots of calls and issues with Sixteenth Street and I kept hearing a reoccurring theme from Oftedal, well Travis, the superintendent on the job here, um, the company that Santiago's with, and I can't think of the company name, but Santiago is the, the contact, the guy doing a lot of the underground work. And then two or three different YDOT people have all expressed what an asset Rick is to our community and his level of care for what they're doing out there and, and how it works going forward for the town. Um, they all said that there was some money saved with his ideas, he's always at the ready, he answers the phone, drops what he's doing, comes to assist. When in fact, they're, they're the engineers and the construction people who's on the ground and they should be able to just handle this job, they lean on him for his expertise. Now, aside note, Rick and I have had some differences in the past and, and we work through them, but I think at, at times he gets frustrated with me and I get frustrated. But when you hear the reoccurring theme, you do the honorable thing and you call him out and, and tell him thank you publicly because you can't hear those things from all those people in a, in the last week or ten days and not realize that he is an asset, so. Here's a small token of thank you for you, for all you do for us. Thank you.
Don't cut you. Ow.
It must be a night, huh?
Three times.
Spicy.
Your knee's gonna be.
Getting better.
You keep that, get up, go home.
Getting better.
I figured out how you're bad.
Item number two is, uh, Vicki Mickelson, and she wants to talk to us about the band shell.
I'm gonna defer to Dan first because he's got, um, some history, a little bit of history about the band shell.
And I think we have some stuff on the screen as well, so. We do, and then Vicki will kind of address the photo, so I'm gonna just give you a little bit of history and because it's historical stuff that I wrote down, I need to kind of read it so I don't mess it up. Well, you, if, if you do us the favor, go to the podium for the, the YouTube feed. It's, it's official around here.
So first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the town council for giving my sister and me time to, um, talk to you for a little bit this evening. We'll try to keep it short. Uh, we want to talk about the, the band shell down at Lewis Park. Um, and, and to understand it, I, I know some of you probably weren't around back then, that was in the early two thousands and many of you were, but it probably wasn't under radar all the time, so I want to give you just a little bit of the background information, so I'm gonna read, read this and I'll go quickly. Aunt Molly Lipson, uh, was the third of the youngest of eight children of John and Mary Brecht who came to America from the Volga region of Russia in about nineteen oh five, nineteen oh six. The youngest five children were born here, uh, three of them were actually born over there. Molly was the only one to graduate from high school and she graduated from Wheatland High School in nineteen thirty-three. After the death of her husband, John Lipson, in nineteen ninety-three, Molly continued to live in Memphis, Tennessee until about, until two thousand two, uh, when my sister Vicki helped her move home to Wheatland, arriving here on November first of two thousand two. And keep that in mind, November first, two thousand two, she was back in Wheatland. Um, in less than a year, Molly had decided to make a contribution to the town of Wheatland and she wanted something that was going to benefit the people of this town. So I suggested, while the others did, that she get together with Molly Wilholm, who at the time was the director of Parks and Rec. And so Molly got together with Molly, quite interesting, and they came up and settled on the idea that Molly, great aunt Molly, thought would really benefit everybody and that she could afford, and that was the band shell. And if memory serves me, it was somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that she donated toward that project. That early next spring, if I recall, Kenny Wilcox started putting it up and with probably the help of other people from, from the, the town, but, um, it was up in time to have a dedication on August ninth of two thousand three. That's pretty fast for something to take place. And I have a feeling, I was talking to my sister a little earlier, that I wonder if she, when she was moving back here, already knew that she wanted to do something that was going to benefit the people of this community and also to honor her mother and father, who were poor dirt farmers, living in Volga, who came here not even knowing the English language. And you know, that's, that's always a tough thing. So, um, we feel really fortunate to have that structure. And as, as Vicki will tell you, it has served many, many uses over the last twenty-three years, twenty-two years. So I'm gonna turn, now that you have a little bit of history, background, I'm gonna turn it over to Vicki and she's gonna talk to you about, I guess I'm gonna call him some concerns we have about it, because it's kind of like it's gone on the back burner lately, and if you go down there, and I hope all of you will go look at it, you'll, you'll notice it really does need some attention, probably pretty quickly, and maybe it needs to be on some kind of a annual sort of review or something, whatever, whatever the town does. So I'm gonna turn it over to Vicki. And does she have to come up to this podium too, or are you gonna give her a special?
Podium is best for the, um, viewers.
Thank you.
I have no notes, but, um, I don't know if you can make any of those photos bigger, Dan and I went down, this, these photos are from June. I haven't been down there again to look, but I'm assuming that nothing has changed a whole lot. It was originally designed as just wood with a finish on it. I don't know, honestly, looking at the condition of it now, I, I think it would have to be completely sanded down and start over. It, uh, it, it's just kind of sad. I know for years, I don't know if people are still using it for weddings, there were a lot of weddings down there, there were concerts in the park, there were church services, um, I, I even know, I think there were a funeral or two that I went to, or memorial services have been down there, I don't know if it's getting used as much as it used to, used to, but as you can see, the way it looks, I'm not sure I'd want to have a wedding there, that's for sure. I don't know if there's a budget for maintaining that, or if it's just in all, you know, lumped in, I don't have the mind, nobody answered that, but I, we just wanted to point it out, it's just, it's just gone into such disrepair, I don't know what kind of money we're looking at to, to get it looking nice again, or any suggestions, I mean, we probably have to have somebody look at it to see just what needs to happen, but we just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of just how bad it's gotten, so thank you for your time and discuss among yourselves, I guess. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, one thing I'd like to point out, Tabitha, could you bring up the green, the greenery picture?
Yes.
I called, I called Molly Wilholm because I wanted to get some input from her, make sure my dates were right, and of course they weren't all right, but she squared me away. That was a landscape by the Boy Scouts, and it was a beautiful space and now it's just overgrown, so there's stuff, it's still good underneath, but you just can't see the underneath because it's grown up a lot, so it needs to be, you know, cut back and a few things like that, but, yeah.
And that was donated to the town of Wheatland, correct? Also make sure who actually, the owners of who owns it, I think is what's important in that.
Am I allowed to say something? Um, I think I have, I think we have enough stain that we could donate, um, that we have left over from the hardware store with gallons and gallons and gallons, so we'd be willing to donate that.
And I talked to Aaron, Aaron called me, and I went down and there, there's a lot of areas that, um, are going to need sanded, I can just tell you. Sure. It's, it's worn through, the doors themselves, if you picture, what, one, two, three, and right there, uh, we would need to clear, I mean, obviously it was, uh, had graffiti on it taken down, I think we need to sand that back and coat, completely recote that too.
Um, another thing that might need to be mentioned, I, we visited with Tabitha a little bit, there were some problems, they, they, at least at one point had cameras down there that, I mean, Dan and I personally caught some kids doing graffiti down there once and got after them, but, um, and I know when I was municipal judge, I had a couple of different issues where they had caught them on camera and I had them in court, but, um, I don't know that the cameras are working at this point, do you know, Tab? I think we just have to figure out what the log is. So, that might deter, I don't know if it will or not.
Another thing, uh, Tabitha, could you bring up the right hand, that last picture on the right? Um, you'll notice there's been some, some attempts to, to stain, but what I'm, what you'd look at is the bottom part, it almost looks like either sprinklers are hitting it, or maybe it's just rain dripping off, that's how they, might need to address differently, I don't know, but.
You have Toby looking at it?
I was gonna say, I don't have any, any issue with allocating some resource to figure out what to.
I think it's a huge asset.
Back up to a pristine setting again.
Yeah.
Because, um, I know, you know, my family's used it for get togethers and, uh, even class reunion meals, breakfast, I mean, I have been, heck, when Brad was doing movies in the park, he used to go down there and you'd gather around that area for the movies in the park in the evening when the kids were younger. Yeah, it's, it's a well-used facet of the community that's, I guess, almost embarrassing to see that it's gotten that bad and, you know, right underneath our own nose.
Because of the heightened signs, do we need to look at getting, um, some quotes to get somebody in here to actually sand it?
Yeah, we would.
Yeah.
And we, you'll reach out and get probably three quotes on that so we can get a good fair balance on it, and the stain, if the Ash and her still wish to do that, you know, Carrie, I'm, I'm not sure we'd have any problem with that, but we just need to make sure we have. Yeah. Like, can we look into that and start looking at some quotes?
The party of us, nope.
Thank you.
I would just add that if you get up eight feet up where it's protected and people aren't doing things to it, it looks like new, you know, it's still, so you only gonna have to concentrate on the bottom eight or whatever feet, probably. So it won't be quite as overwhelming.
Yeah, but for the amount of wood and to preserve it over time, I think with the weather, we'd be better off to do the whole thing at one time. And just to make sure it's all taken care of properly.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm the one and done kind of guy.
I understand you.
If I'm gonna pull the trigger, I'm gonna do it right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Another thing I've, I've noticed being a, an owner of a log cabin, that they need to be stained about every couple, three.
Every two years, yeah.
Way more maintenance than paint job, so, you know, if at some point you decide maybe painting is a better option than staining down the road, I mean, I don't think anybody in the family would care.
I do too.
We don't like that, it's, it's beautiful. And when it was brand-new, it was just spectacular. And it probably could be like that, it's just that it takes more maintenance.
That's something we should work out into the budget eventually, is, you know, work it into where it's done biannually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I think it needs to be that way.
And then we can look at and address in the future, because right now, you know, we're, a lot of what we're doing this year is playing catch-up on some different projects that have been having me see this much attention over the years. So now, just, thank you for bringing to our attention, and we can look at it. Now we know who owns it, we have a plan to go forward, and we get some quotes on it. Now we can actually work with it within our budgets. So yeah, thank you, Dan.
Molly would be very grateful.
Just because Vicki scares me, that's the only reason I'm saying.
I know.
It's good seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Agenda item number three is the Ashenhurst with parking on Sixteenth Street. The floor is yours.
The podium is yours.
Yeah, the podium, okay.
Yeah, goes on.
Thank you.
Acting like his dad, Toby.
Who am I talking to? Exactly. Anyone that might be listening, is it, is this on CNN?
It's, uh...
The D-Hiding Network.
Okay, so, hi everyone, my name's Oliver Ashenhurst, and I, first of all, I wanted to just give you an update on the business. We talked a few months ago when I applied for a liquor license and it was granted, and I appreciate that. But we've just gotten a lot of support. It's nice to come home, and I'm excited to be a part of this community again that I grew up in. And it's been really neat to experience the support that, that my team and I have with this restaurant, because I went to business school and they said, "Do not start a restaurant." They said eighty percent fail in the first five years, so don't do it.
An anchor in the room sitting here shaking his head as well.
Yeah, yeah, so definitely was something that I didn't picture myself doing, but I love food and really, really like this community, so it was an opportunity to see. So anyway, and then also, I wanted to thank Tabitha for coming over and meeting with us the other day to look at the parking situation, because there are, I, I understand that, that there are some concerns in the community with customers parking. And it's also been someone in the organization, it wasn't me, but had, had directed employees to park. So we had some employees parking across the street too, for like some peak hour stuff. And so, yeah, and I, and, and there were vehicles that were parked there overnight and things like that. So I understand the issue with that. My, I guess why I'm here, why we're on the agenda is I would like to know the reasons why parking is not acceptable on Sixteenth, Southbound, in, in that location specifically. And because I, I see vehicles parked in other places along Sixteenth, and I, I just, I, I would like to know the reasons why in that location specifically, why the signs are there.
I'll be the first one to say, I, I live right up past where you're at. The safety of people getting out of vehicles right there is, I've seen it probably two or three times now. Just people, they open their door right into traffic. There's not enough space on that side of the street for a vehicle, plus safety of getting out of a vehicle, you know what I'm saying? That's one thing that I was drawn to attention. Actually, I had people that, I had just gone home and people followed me and said, "Hey, why, why are the people parked right there, you know, when, you know, they're getting out of their vehicle and they're immediately in the lane of traffic?" That, that's a huge safety concern. If you know what I do for a living, that's always the first thing that comes to my brain. So that's, that's probably the, one of the big reasons that I kind of would like to see, you know, where this kind of goes, because it's, last thing we want someone in front of your establishment getting drilled, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, anywhere, yeah. So, okay, so safety is the big...
That's my big thing, I don't, I don't know what the, I'm only speaking for me on this right now.
And it's because in that particular location, there's not enough space?
Well, it's kinda, it's got kind of a, as you well know, it's an uphill and kind of a draw and so, you know, to the, be back to the east. And people are going up there, especially when it's parked up way on top there. You know, you're headed up, you know, whatever. And again, it's driver's safety, of course, and you always should be driving defensively. However, it'd be that one time that someone's, you know, bang, there they are.
And like Jason, I live literally right behind your business, essentially.
Yeah, that's all.
Yes, I live right on Fifteenth and...
Sorry about the smell.
Doesn't bother me at all. But then, I guess, I've been watching this whole thing develop since you moved in and started doing the work in the business with your dad, the concrete pores, and knowing this is coming today, I actually rode by.
Oh, really?
The alley. I wanna see what was behind the building itself to allow additional parking, because I just wanna see for myself how much parking was available. And there's actually quite a bit of parking available when you look at where, where the camper is. There's a camper back there.
Oh, across the alley?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, on the east side of the alley.
Correct. And I saw gravel parking available.
Yeah.
And I see a lot of availability back there for different parking.
Yeah.
Which leads me to believe, why are we gonna block part of a main highway of Sixteenth Street? Because it's supposed to be not, you have to have at least ten feet of clearance on a roadway when parking adjacent to it, by the state statute. I, I just had it pulled up.
Okay, yeah.
And that's something we're looking at, is again, adjacent to the safety aspect of things. And when you guys increase that parking area in front of your business, you know, you tore up all that stuff, you put new concrete down, and then across the other side, on North Side, you have additional parking back over there. No lines in there yet, I didn't see.
No.
But it's just kind of a crease roll.
Yeah, yeah.
But you go back in the alleyway, and coming up the alley, I took a good hard look, and you might have heard the rumble of a mortal's girl going up the alley earlier, that was me. But you had a multitude of parking spots available. If that camper was moved out of the way...
Well, that, is that public, or?
I don't know who it belongs to.
I'm not sure either, but the camper, I think, is, it's across the alley. So I, we just assumed that that was the neighbor's, but not ours. I, I don't really know.
And that's where your property lines, you bought the business, do you have, do you have an assessment done of the property lines?
Yeah.
And you know where those property lines end and begin?
I don't, I'm just a tenant, but...
And your mother's nod on her head, yes.
She, she might know, yeah, I, I don't know for sure.
The state engineer for the highway department came in and inspected everything and told us it would be fine to park along that Sixteenth Street.
Okay.
So that's why we assumed that we would have all that.
He, he did, and that's true.
Yeah.
No, we didn't, we didn't get that.
Yeah, he just told us that, and he said, "But it was, I think, I read the town's jurisdiction, but it should be fine, because all along Sixteenth Street, that whole road is available for parking."
Right, the state statute is, "No person shall park any vehicle upon a street other than an alley in such a manner or under conditions as to leave less than ten feet of the width of the roadway for free movement of vehicle or traffic."
So...
And that's, and when you're looking at, the average lane of, of traffic is about twelve feet. And when you're already parking half-on, half-on, now you're taking up at least two feet. So you're already shrinking down the ten-foot of travel. And you're trying to have two vehicles passing, you see where the, the complications can come in?
Wait, passing?
North and southbound.
Yeah, yeah.
With a vehicle being parked there, or multiple vehicles being parked there like in the past.
Okay.
You see where I'm going with this?
I, I do.
And like Jason said, the safety aspect of things, and I'm a prior cop, so I kinda look at things in the safety aspect as well, in the flow of traffic. So I kinda look at this realistically. And I'm not being overly critical, I'm just making sure that we're not causing undue, one, hardship on your business, two, undue safety issues, because once the snow flies, and people get accustomed to slide and sit and park in there...
Yeah, and so it has only been in cases of overflow parking.
Yeah, but what about the area in the back behind you as well? That's another thing I was bringing up earlier.
That is used for overflow during, so really, when we have this need for overflow parking is Friday night dinners. We do dinner once a week, and it's on, on Friday nights is when we have that need. And there were a couple, as I apologized for before, there were a couple instances where vehicles got left across the street during the daytime. Those were some of our people, that, that shouldn't have happened. But that was the only case of overnight parking. And it was people that lived, it was people that lived there, and just didn't move their vehicles. But the only times when we have overflow need, so far, we've had an event, and then we had, and then our Friday night dinners, when we serve, I mean, we serve up to fifty-five people in a night, and our, our, we have maybe twenty-some parking spaces in the front, and then we have those few parking spaces against the alley that we carved out to try to avoid having people walk across the street or, or from places like that. But all of it's full on Friday nights. Especially, you get a couple super duties in the parking lot, and it's, I mean, they'll take up, you know, four parking spots, because they have to be able to get there. So that's, as, as far as that goes, it's, it's not just like today, you know, there's only lodging guests there. And then during lunch hours, we have some people that come in for lunch. But we haven't run into the need for overflow parking very much. It's just those Friday dinners that, that are kind of wild. And you just end up with a lot of traffic in there. But the second thing, the safety, the, as far as from the safety standpoint, and the ten feet, I'm, my, my question is, what, what about the vehicles that park on Sixteenth Street? Like by the dog park, for example, on, on Sixteen, Northbound, or all along Sixteen, Southbound, like at the apartments? Not the apartments, but the, like the trailer park there? I, I just think about all these, are they, I mean, is that within that ten feet, or?
Usually, yes, because it's already designed that way, that kind of width.
The speed limit is the same out there where we're at, and it's lower traffic. So these areas are much higher traffic on Sixteenth, right through town. So my, my question is, I, I mean, is, why just now? And I, I understand that there might be a greater safety concern with the hill and that, but...
And the ones on Sixteenth Street, the ones you just spoke of, have curb and gutter, so it's been designed for parking there.
Okay.
And illumination and dedicated crosswalks, and I mean, it's, it's fairly technical. I mean, I, I hear you and I wanna work with you, but I, I don't see an easy solution, okay?
And I don't, also, you remember, the town has the park at the, the walkway. And I think we're obligated to keep under our agreement with, I think the state actually owns that property.
They do.
We have the ability to, we have to maintain it. Part of that maintenance is keep the foliage in there, keep it cut and neat. And two things come to mind, and you guys have to make the decision, is that in the wintertime, if somebody parks or a wet spring, and their tracks go in, or they pull out of there, then you have tracks in there that somebody has to fix. Then you also have to worry about, if it's parked there a lot, who's gonna care for it and reseed it and make sure it grows? Because I can tell you, that's part of the grant and the money that we receive from, from the state. It's up to you guys, but I think you have to consider those things that, when you make those agreements with, with the state and the walkway people, that our obligation is to maintain that and go from there. And what do you do when you remove the snow, and it just stays there? You know, are you gonna allow them to pull in there and park? You know, those big trucks that Oliver was talking about, are they just gonna be allowed to pull in there and park? All of that's up to you, but the town does have those other obligations that they have to think about.
Yes.
Can I speak up? Oh, so I think we've seen at least five restaurants close in the last two years, three years maybe. I'm super excited to see an entrepreneur, a young person, come to Wheatland, from Wheatland, and try to run a successful business. And this does not sound like a very business-friendly community to me when I hear things like this. I understand the safety concern, but I applaud what he's done. That's a lot of his risk that he's taken to try to run a successful business in Wheatland, and, and I see lots of obstacles, and, and it's just, it's very distressing. And I think we need to think in terms of, are we a business-friendly community? And are we here to support businesses, or do we like seeing, you know, Taco John's, Burger King, you know, the country club building? Because we'll get more of that if we don't try to support our businesses. And they've done all the job, a really nice job, and I hope that we can at least find a way to support them. Because if not, it's, it's rough. It's very rough being a business person.
I'm completely in support of, in support of business, I'm just not in support of seeing someone get hit right there.
I would like to, and I'm sure if I run over pedestrian, the police officer will cite you.
Well, okay, but now, yeah, he's gonna cite you. But now, have you ever had to go tell a family member, "Hey, we couldn't do anything"? Not a good feeling.
I, I completely agree, but...
I, I guess I feel like I expressed my sentiment of wanting to work with them to come to a solution, because I also echo those same sentiments. And if that labels me as not being business-friendly, I guess label me that then. But that's not at all what I said, so, very good point. And yes, absolutely, we don't need to see any more closures of what we have currently. But also, we're obligated as elected officials to make sure we do it the right way. And I've made some, some phone calls and got some conflicting answers, because, you know, I've talked with Thane, and now I'm listening to Carrie and Oliver. And, and undoubtedly, somebody at YDOT did tell them it would be okay to park there. I, I have no doubt about that, and I'm employed by YDOT, so I gotta be a little bit careful here. But conversely, the traffic engineer that I talked to today is the District Two Traffic Engineer. Her name is Brooke Allen, and she works under Mark Williams, who used to be a Town of Wheatland resident, has promoted up through the ranks and is now in Casper. And it was their opinion that, yes, they own that property, but it's within the city limits of Wheatland, and if we have ordinances pertaining to parking in regards to curb and gutter, street lights, crosswalks, those types of things, that if we're going to allow parking there, that those criteria have to be met like they are on the other business loop in the Sixteenth Street corridor. Until then, it was their recommendation that we not allow parking there until those criteria are met. Now that, that comes back to a liability thing for the town of Wheatland. And, and as you well know, we live in a very liability-driven mindset. And so to feel like I'm doing my due diligence, I have tried to educate myself very well to figure out a way to be helpful to the Ashenhurst, because I don't wanna see their business not succeed over something like parking. But I don't wanna make the town liable for an issue that we could have prevented if we'd have done it the right way. And, and so I, I think there's gonna be some conversations in the future. I, I certainly want everybody to hear that the town is very amicable in the idea of helping you come up to a solution. I'm not sure what that looks like, I mean, I don't know what cost association is, I don't. But absolutely want to work with you, not against you.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't know if this is the right place for this, I'm kind of, we're speaking to Carrie, but I, I believe it's Gorman's that owned that vacant lot to the east and northeast. I don't, is there any way to, we, that crossed our minds when we were dealing on that building. Is there any way to make any kind of arrangement with them to park?
That's where my mind goes, because then you could have, I mean, you could have a huge parking lot.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if it's for sale, or if they'd let you lease it as a parking lot, or, I don't know.
Well, I think the building inspector has a couple of things that might work out, like if you put this land, you add an entrance and an exit to the alley, or something like that. So whenever we're done, maybe it might help a little bit.
I say one thing probably completely out of line, but I'm completely insulted and offended by that comment, that we are not a business-friendly community, because I was getting there offering multiple different solutions to mitigate this and prevent people's injury, property damage, or anything else. So coming at us and saying we're not a business-friendly community, I'm attending the PCEB, doing everything I can to help our community grow and bring in businesses. That was insulting to all of us up here.
It wasn't.
So I wanted to clear that one up right there.
I wanna speak on that, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I didn't mean to come late. I was watching on YouTube, but I do wanna thank you guys and let you know that I appreciate you taking public, public comment. My name is Holly Allison, I'm a local Wheatland resident. I live in the county, but I do own some rental properties here in the town of Wheatland. And I'm actually a real estate agent, and I'm really thankful because I get to rent an office space on Sixteenth Street. So I do have a little bit of interest in this, because I am a tenant there, just kind of during the week. And I appreciate having a nice, beautiful facility to walk into. And I appreciate having a nice, beautiful facility to walk into and to run my business there. And I did not take his comments as being attacking you or offensive to you guys. On the real estate side of things, I've had a few commercial listings in Wheatland and I've had some out-of-state companies that have came in and asked. And their first questions are, where's there to eat in Wheatland? What's there to do? And is it business-friendly to work in? What is your building inspector like? What is your code like? And I'm proud to say that I live in Wheatland and I like this community and I like the people that live here. And I like that there's two different opinions in the room. And I get that safety is a big issue. But we can't always, sometimes saying no is just the easiest solution. And I think that you guys are all very solutions-minded, so I hope that you come forward with some sort of solution. This is one night a week. Last winter, we didn't have any snow. I get that. We'll probably have snow mixtures, we can't just count on that. But the grass that's there, I know that we need to take care of it, not drag all over it, but it's prairie grass. It's not irrigated. There is irrigation on the trees, that's important of maintaining all of that, I'm not arguing any of that, those points. But it's important to me that we are business-friendly and that, I'm not saying that's a bad reflection on you guys. But we have to figure out how to, when we do have somebody that steps out there, it is a huge risk to start a business. And it is huge risk to do a restaurant. And restaurants are so important to a community. Because I grew up in a community that it has, the only restaurant it has is a Pizza Hut and it has a Sail Bar and Cafe on Tuesdays. And that makes it really hard for people to come together and be a part of the community, especially in an ad community, when you come to town and you want a place to meet with your friends and family, and so restaurants are important. I think they're a backbone of a community. So I hope that if there are solutions to be had, I hope that you can find those and have those. I get the safety issue, but every other town in America has street parking and people get out of cars all the time. We do that all the time on Main Street. There's always going to be instances of danger of people crossing streets, driving vehicles, opening car doors, always. So I get what you're saying, but I really hope that you come up with a solution. And I, please don't be personally offended if someone is just saying, business is so important. And these are the questions that we're getting asked every day as real estate agents, as bankers. And so coming up with those solutions together, I think is important. And I thank you all.
Thank you for your comments, Holly. Well, I I look forward to working with you guys to be solution-oriented. Like like Tabitha said, I think Virgil's got some ideas. I can expand to you some ideas from the upper brass out of Casper with YDOT. Like I said, I don't know cost association or whatever, but there there are some options that would be beneficial to you. And in conversation with your dad, we're supposed to get together either later this week or the first part of next week. So I'll try to, when I talk to him again, I'll try to tell him, let's get all the figureheads together at the same time. So we can, we can work towards, I'll work towards gathering some more data and and, you know, hopefully bring some options, at least that way you'll have ideas of something rather than just people like you're shut out.
Okay, thank you so much. And and also, I I will say, Vic, Mickey, thank you so much for the, for your ideas. We we've explored that option.
I think you had.
And it, you know, financially, it's going to be a little bit before we can, we can go that route. And so I think, you know, we we just need a little bit of help to try to grow our business right now. We we fully intend to do what we can to expand that way as possible.
I know it's a little bit further a walk, but you also have the Fifteenth Street is a long open area right there as well. And you have that little offshoot that goes between Fifteenth and Fourteenth. You have to walk up the alley a little bit.
It's the only place in town that all the numbers meet. Fourteen, sixteen.
Okay, on the other side.
We have those areas right there that offer parking that is on on a street with curbs and lighting. You have to walk up the alley potentially, but it also mitigates part of the stuff we're talking about. He's trying to, I'm giving you all the options I can possibly think of, being familiar with that area. He's trying to, you know, guide this discussion in a positive light, but looking at what we can do to help you out with this.
Okay, cool. That's that's fine, thank you.
No, and thank you for taking time to bring a concern forward, that's what we're here for.
We appreciate it, but like like you said, we need to do this in the right way. It goes out lighting, dark clothes, dark night, and you know people always come up that road? And they stop at thirty miles down at the cemetery, right?
Yeah, and that's the other thing is, I mean, even people walking across from further away. We've had, we've had offers, like the chamber is offered, you know, things like that, but that gets people walking along the street. And it's always at night, so.
We understand that, so I'm trying to think of any solution we can come up with in that little area.
Cool, thanks. Thanks, Oliver.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Excuse me, item number four is Lorraine and Darcy. And I think one or both of them is going to talk about Wyoming Community Gas.
Over here, Darcy and I get to make phone calls in support of Wyoming Community Gas. Encouraging the citizens of Wheatland to to participate with the Wyoming Community Gas program. They do give back to the community a lot. They usually are one of the best, most efficient, affordable companies to go with with the open enrollment or open enrollment, it is.
Choice gas.
Open choice gas.
And I would.
We get to go, there's several times throughout the year that we have meetings. And so we're always on listening to those, if we can't go to them in person, we're always listening to them while we're here. We, you know, take notes and we just really try to give ideas, feedbacks from other towns, what other towns do, how other towns work, you know, trying to get sponsorships, you know, or, you know, the electors and stuff. It's it's pretty immense.
Wyoming Community Gas offers like a an incentive kickback for enrolled members in the community. And because of the diligence of these two touching as many people in the community as they can, we received a check this year in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. So these ladies are due a good round of applause for for generating.
That might be a good thing to use our money on, is that ban shell.
Yeah. Because it hasn't touched the whole community.
Yes, in years past, we've done park upgrades, the dog park, the miniature golf course. I mean, that's what these type, the splash park, these types of funds have been spent on that. So that's exactly where I was going, I was thinking this might be a nest egg or a seed to start a project for the ban shell.
In addition to the to the money that they give back to the community of community, though, we can also apply for grants that they do. They do enough, three, yeah, some, yeah, three, yeah.
So we can always.
That would be probably a very good grant-eligible project because it does touch community-wide. I don't know. I'm trying to remember, did have, have we received a community gas grant?
I don't think we've received a grant, just that's just their.
It's the funds.
Their funds, they give back. That one's the different grant. That was inter-type.
Inter-type, that's right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you guys for your efforts.
Thank you. They don't even want to shake our hands.
They didn't want to make you stand up.
I'm done standing up.
That's the end of the agenda items in the public comment section, but there are, there are other people probably that would like to speak in this public comment section. Josephine comes to mind. Do you have anything for us?
You know me well, I just have two small things. The first thing would be, you'll get a formal invitation soon, but our annual meeting for PCED is coming on October seventh. It's a Tuesday night, it's kind of a little funky, but it's safari-themed and we would be honored to have you. So that'll be fun and again, you'll get a formal invitation. And then the only other thing I had tonight was that, and I've been working, I sent it to the mystery fire chief. And so hopefully, there's more to come, but Black Hills Gas started a grant program for volunteer fire departments to help with equipment. And so I'll pass that on anytime I get it.
Excellent, thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business item number one, which will be the third and final reading of ordinance number eight fifty-five, which is an ordinance repealing ordinance number eight fifty, which is establishing business licensing for food service establishments, mobile food trucks, mobile food units, and food stands. I would entertain a motion, discussion. I'm making motion to approve the third reading of ordinance number eight fifty-five, repealing ordinance eight fifty, establishing business licensing for food service establishment, mobile food trucks, mobile food units, and food stands.
And seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Just a quick reminder, this is the third and final reading of the ordinance. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion will carry. Agenda item number two is the third and final reading on ordinance number eight fifty-six, which is the electric rate increase. I hate saying that word.
You're going to be standing at a launch.
Making motion to approve the third reading of ordinance number eight fifty-six, electric rate increase.
And seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion will carry. And the last unfinished agenda item is ordinance number eight fifty-seven, which is on its second reading. And it is pertaining to cemetery rates.
Motion for the second reading ordinance eighty-seven for cemetery rates.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. She carries. Moving on to new business item number one, Josh Morris with Ardua gives us an update on the airport apron project.
Well, good evening. Yeah, I'll keep this pretty brief, but the apron project is moving along pretty well. They've been out there, they started the eleventh of August. So been there about a month, they've they've made pretty good progress. Right now, they're bringing, we've got the subgrade passed off, they're bringing in the subbase, which is our first lift is an asphalt pavement section. Really, I expect that they're meeting the schedule, they probably a couple of days behind where they thought they'd be, but they're hoping to pick back up and keep moving forward, will probably be closing the apron fully in about two weeks. Be coordinating with them to try to nail down that date better so we can notify the hangar owners, everybody else that will be affected. But really, they're, I've been pretty impressed with them, they seem to be doing a really good job. They've been very quality-minded, they come to us with issues before we have to find them, which is always, honestly, from a contractor, that is a very big sign. Unless you guys have any questions, I'll do it then.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update, Josh. The second item under new business is the WWC agreement for the pathway.
I've looked at it and I talked it, candidly, because I've, we've done this a couple of times. And it never got to you guys, but all the suggested changes were made by the contract, the professional engineers. They they took all our suggestions. I think it it's about a hundred and fifty-one thousand for the the design stage and the planning stage for this pathway. I think the pathway goes along Coal Street for a while, then drops down along Golf Apartments. And then from the Little League down to Mariposa, I don't know the exact route, but that's the two design areas that they're looking at. The town, I think it's a hundred and fifty-one thousand or something. The town has about a ten percent participation. I think the grant is for two hundred and twenty-two thousand, but they did it at a hundred and fifty-one thousand. You still have that obligation to pay that ten percent.
Yeah, it's a ninety-ten grant match.
That's where we're at on that.
Yes, sir, I just want to say, I'm out walking bike paths or biking bike paths every other morning. There are always people, always people. We more than utilize. Running, walking, biking, they are a fantastic thing. The only place it gets more usage than the back, than the bike paths is the cemetery. That is the number one, walking. But anyway, I think the more that we can do bike paths in in good locations that are going to get that kind of use, the better. Thank you for supporting that.
And I think these will actually connect the back bike path.
Trying to start to connect.
Yes, the better now, we tend to have some segments that are just hanging out there.
Motion for a very long time.
A very, very long time. Mr. Plan, which is probably twenty-five years ago, that's what that was. Everything would ultimately become connected and you can only do so much, you know, a year's time and so it's, but it's coming to fruition, so. Great thing.
If you were instrumental in getting it started too.
I was maybe not instrumental, but I was. I would say instrumental is a pretty accurate word.
Humble as always. You did the legwork, Dan.
So we just need to have a motion to agree to execute, have the mayor sign.
Yes.
Yes.
An agreement?
And a motion for a planning agreement with the, I'm sorry, with the WST agreement for pathways on Coal and Mariposa.
Been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion will carry. New business item number three is the planning agreement with engineering associates. You guys should all have a copy of this in front of you and I would entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion to hire engineering associates to do the planning for the town of Wheatland. So moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion will carry. And now, another probably controversial topic, but it is what it is. New business, item number four is a discussion on a ordinance pertaining to loitering. And in your packet, you should have had some, I don't know what you want to call it, some thoughts of what an ordinance might look like from the the chief of police. And I would like to, I guess, engage in conversation on the thoughts that you put forth in a loitering ordinance.
You know, he brought it to me and give Brad credit, he he worked hard on it. I've always thought this, I, and I'll continue to say this, I think probably is unconstitutional to be selectively enforced. And we're trying to solve, to be frank, one problem in person right now. Already had a conversation with that person. I think when you start saying loitering, if you're in front of a business, you know, and somebody doesn't like you there, you know, pretty soon cite them for loitering. It it becomes a real problem, I think. And and it also becomes a problem that it'll be a municipal ordinance. Municipal ordinances have only one truth, that is, we find those people. And the people that we want to cite with loitering don't have any money. So here's, here's what happens, is that then they don't pay. Then we issue an arrest warrant, then we bring them into court and we say, pay. They say, okay, then we do that a couple. They say, okay. Then we do that a couple of times and then pretty soon we, we hold them in contempt and we put them in jail. Then you pay the county to put them in jail. So you've taken a fine that wasn't paid and actually end up the cap, the city has to pay that person to be held in jail. Cause it, there's, this doesn't go by the county at all. It's just the city. And, and in spite of that, I still believe it would be unconstitutional if somebody challenged it. And might as well know that. Maybe I'm wrong, but I, I think when you start making these fine lines, remaining idle in essentially one little vision, they, they could accuse me of that at times in my life. I hate to tell you. And shall improve the concept of spending time idly, help people accuse me of that all the time.
Well, Doug, I, I'd agree. Sometimes I think I have to set a stake to see if you're right.
And so, so as a result, those, those definitions become something that, that caused me great heartburn. And I think you just have to look at it and see where you, you might come down on it, but those are my thoughts. I don't know what, Brad, I think voiced similar concerns when he was here at the last time, the council meeting when it came up. Not so much unconstitutional, but how do you enforce it and, and do that? And I, I think that's, police officers would dread it all the time. But at least he took a shot at it. And I know, uh, the chief and some of his officers as well as I have, I've spoken to some of those individuals and say, listen, knock it off. And I hate to tell you, some of the businesses give those people stuff, feed those people stuff. And so they are loitering downtown.
If you feed a stray cat.
But anyway, that's my thoughts.
Probably not the most opinion, most approved opinion in the world, but I would move the table this.
Second.
You don't have to table it. It's just a discussion tonight, but I, I think at least you've talked about it and, and have it where if you wanted to bring it back up, you could. And you wouldn't have to bring it up as a tabled item tonight. That was just a discussion. It wasn't an ordinance or anything like that.
Not for listening and listening to small businesses downtown who have had problems. Listening to your side of it. One of the rare times we agree, Doug. Listen to the chief, listen to the cops. I'm trying to make this as realistic as possible, but I hate how litigious our society has become. And you're right. I think this is getting excessive.
Yeah.
Why, I don't like an ordinance or a law that's not enforced. I think it's a waste of paper, waste of time. Again, I don't like what's coming and we all have to doubt these people.
And, and I think some of the business owners have put signs and told the people no more trespassing. And, and I think that's helped to a certain extent. I think one thing, and we may have to just pay for it. In that alleyway between Ninth and Tenth Street and on Main Street, I don't know where. Here's what I believe, cause a lot of the buildings on Main Street are built from property line to property line. There's no setbacks in the downtown area. We have couches in the back. And if they're on alley property, I think if, if we can show that by survey, we tell them to get rid of them. And that way we eliminate one more thing that people sit in. One's covered with a tarp right now, so it doesn't get wet, I'm assuming.
Being a downtown business owner who has a candy jar and it often gets used by some of those people that you're talking about, it looks to me like there are two, two issues. One is they're either, there's either drunken behavior being displayed or they are basically littering. I mean, those, that's what I see as two things. All right. Is there anything else that I'm missing?
There has been some.
And so aren't there already laws against drunken behavior? Is, is there a littering ordinance?
There's a littering ordinance, but somebody has to sign the complaint. Somebody has to see it. I understand that position, but I can tell you, you ask somebody, why don't you sign this complaint? Cause I didn't see it? They say, oh no, I don't, I don't want to sign that because they have to go to court. I mean, we do that. And then public intoxication has to be on the streets. The state statute, I think it has to be on, on the streets.
Straight highway.
Yeah, it can't be.
Highway, it can't be on the sidewalks. Cause they talked about that before.
We went down that road.
And I'm telling you, I had it, I'll be real honest. I had a shouting match out on the street with one of these individuals. I haven't seen much of him since then.
No, he's been hanging out down at my house.
And I think Brad had a similar conversation with him, so. I would dress up.
Neighbor's house across the street. But if there's littering and it's on town property, then a policeman can go charge.
They have to see it. They can't just.
They see that, well, if it's a couch that somebody put there and we don't put the couch there.
That could be the business owner as well, putting it behind there.
I, I think we just remove the couch. If it's on our property, if it's, if that alleyway is where I think it is, I think we just take the couch and tell that person, that's, it's behind, say, listen, you need to get rid of it or we're going to come and take it. Cause we've all seen him sitting and sleeping on, or passed down on those couches. Like, those are.
They're not going to help you in jail anywhere.
If he maintains his continual annual habit.
If we have a lot of weed, it'll happen.
And please don't take the benches out because a lot of us use them and our customers use them. So that's not a good solution.
So you're remaining idle. That's my point.
It's tough to define that.
It is.
Well, and, and to speak to Councilor Mixon's thoughts about litigious society, I mean, I, I echo that same sentiment in my conversation with Oliver. I mean, the liability driven nightmare that we live in is just, I mean, it's, you have to constantly be thinking about watching your backside and not leaving the door open for somebody to sneak in on you because it just, it, it has become that type of world that we live in. Everybody's looking for that little crevice to exploit to make it your fault. I mean, always, always the victim, not, don't own responsibility for yourself. I, 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 I would be remiss if I didn't take a minute and, and thank you, chief, for putting the time and effort into trying to come up with something and giving us a good basis for a discussion. I appreciate your efforts to try to make something work here. And that doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you for that. Anything else on that thought? So it looks like we have reached the executive session portion of the agenda, so.
Just move into executive session for contract discussions.
So you want to take a stab at that motion?
I make a motion. We move to executive session for contract discussion and possible negotiation.
Been moved and seconded. And I'll make the announcement real quick before everybody leaves. Our next meeting is October thirteenth, seven o'clock right here. Come in.